Session of the Joshua City Council at six forty-five. One-on-one, so actually it's not one-on-one, South Main's not open to the public, although we do have it to where anybody in the public that's wanting to ask a question, if they'll go online, we do have a speaker card that they can fill out. That will automatically go to the city secretary and we can answer those questions. We do have a quorum present. The item that we have to discuss tonight is discuss, consider and take action on applying for the safer grant and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. The primary reason for the call in the special meeting was is that Chief Tom has done a good job on getting the grant all put together, but it's got to be submitted by Friday. And one of the things that has to be included with that is a statement from the city manager saying that if we are indeed granted the grant, we are willing to spend the money that we'll need to spend this year, which correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, you don't have the exact amount, probably around a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
What's that now in terms of the budget?
The amount of the grant that we're turning in this time. Last year was one fifty, but this one's a little bit less because we didn't ask for the training officer.
Well, it actually was a little bit more than that last time, but the, we, we, we actually went in for four, four personnel slots, three firefighters and one training officer, and there was, there was also some PPE and some other training funds included in that. This time around, we're just applying for the three firefighters. So we're not, we're not, we would not be applying for the training officer or the additional equipment and training. So this would just be for the three firefighters, so that's why it's a little bit lower. The one hundred and fifty thousand is the per year cost of the, our funding of the, the three-year, the three-year grant per the new application.
Okay, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand for the three firefighters that we would be asking for this year?
Yes, that, that's what it, that's what it costs per year.
Okay.
For the three years, so you're talking about just over a little bit of, just a little over four hundred and fifty thousand for the term of the grant.
Okay. And like I said, the reason we're having the meeting is we do have to have this letter of understanding basically that we include with the grant. And I know Josh had a concern if we're talking about doing the homestead exemption, what is that going to do to us this year? So what we wanted to do is to get everybody together before we turned in the grant and see, I guess there's a couple of options. We can go ahead and turn it in. I think if we do turn in the, the grant, we do need to make the commitment that we are going to fund it. That if we indeed do get the grant, I think it would give us a black eye if we turned in for the grant this year and then we're, they called us up and said, we got it, and then we said, no, never mind, we don't want to do it. That would probably kill any future grants, so I think our basic options are we're going to apply for the grant and we're going to have to put in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or we can say, no, let's hold off on the grant, let's see where we end up doing the homestead exemption, see what kind of money we get in this year, and then possibly reapply for the grant next year.
So if I, if I can, if I can, Mayor, let me just, let me just clarify a couple of things. So the, the total cost for the three firefighters per year is a hundred and fifty thousand. But that's the total cost of the three, three firefighters. We would only be basically on the hook for just a little bit over thirty-seven thousand of that, so a third of that for the first two years, and then it would flip for the third year as two-thirds. So we would be looking at just a little bit over thirty-seven thousand for the first two years and then just over ninety-seven thousand for the third year. So it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total, and then our matching part of that is a third, a third, two-thirds, and then we'd be on our own after the fact. So I just wanted to clarify, it would not be a hundred and sixty thousand for, all on our shoulders, that's just the total cost of the grant.
Okay, because I thought what you did last year though was the full a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total, wasn't it?
Well, no, we, well, again, we weren't, we
But that was for additional personnel?
Yeah, it was for additional personnel and some equipment. Now, remember, in the budget, we have to account for the expenditures, all the expenditures, right? So the total cost of the grant, of the four people and the additional training and equipment was in the budget. That's why you saw the fire department's budget, you know, kind of explode from about four hundred to about six hundred thousand dollars. But the offset of that is the, is the, the grants, the grants that came in to offset it. So we would only, we would still would have only been on the hook for a third of that this year had we gotten the grant.
Okay, I guess I'm confused, why did you set aside a hundred and fifty thousand for it then? Because if, for, for just one fiscal year, and maybe I, I wasn't in there on that budget, so maybe I missed something.
We have to account for the expenditure in our, we're, we're actually the ones writing the check.
So you're accounting for it in bookkeeping only?
Okay, okay.
So I'm, I'm having to write the check for a hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm getting two-thirds of that back through the grant.
Okay.
So then that's actually in the budget, so, yes.
All right.
Josh, could I, could I say something real quick, just clarify? It's confusing. This is Tom, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's, it's one quarter, one quarter, then three quarters. I know, I know you said third, but it is confusing.
Okay.
If you, if you take the hundred and fifty and divide it by four, you get the thirty-seven thousand five hundred. And that's, so it's one quarter, first two years, and then three quarters, we, we pay the third year, and then after that, it's all.
Percentage, is that, that's good, thank you, Tom. Chief, sorry, if you used to call him chief.
So anyway, that's, that's what we're trying to decide tonight is do we apply for the safer grant? If we do, we need to make sure we put in the budget to fund it, or do we postpone applying for the safer grant? So just start, Scott, you want to start out?
I'll let somebody else start.
All right, Jerry, you want to talk?
Yeah, Joe, a couple of quick things and Josh can clarify, because you know, when we're looking at three staff at fifty thousand apiece, doesn't seem like enough. Yeah, because that has to factor in benefits and taxes and all, correct?
That's correct.
So what is your base salary, are you assuming for a, for a first, you know, for a, what we would have needed, like drivers?
Tom, you want to speak to that in terms of the
Sure, sure. The base salary, the annual salary would be forty-two thousand. The benefits are about eighty-one hundred a year for each individual.
And so Jerry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, we would be hiring firefighter EMT, basic EMTs, not paramedics. Paramedics would be, you know, we would need to probably go up a little bit more than that if we were trying to get paramedics, but we would be hiring firefighter, basic EMTs.
And Jerry, just, just in addition, in terms of, you know, kind of across the board, public safety starting salary, it's, it's pretty close to the starting salary for our, our police officers. So I think when we initially looked at this, maybe last year we updated, we updated that current cost on the salaries to be commensurate with kind of the PD to be a little bit more on level with them for starting salary pay.
Here's, here's my concern, I mean, I'm all for, you know, the, the grant idea. The only concern I've got is long-term, if we, if we map this out and look out long-term, that in four years, is the city going to be equipped and ready to take on the full task? It doesn't seem like a lot, but when you start to factor in what's going to happen over these next four years, which is just so much unknown, when you factor in ESD, what are they doing, how are they contributing, how are they assisting, and they've been very, you know, that they really haven't done much year over year over year, that they just really continue to run as status quo without really, you know, committing to any kind of plans for the cities. Then you've got the idea that as, as we get into this, three's not going to be enough, you're going to have to grow the department paid staff-wise beyond that. And so we've got a million dollar budget on just police. And you're going to have to have, if you're going to have, eventually, if you want to get a, just a, you know, three shifts, you're looking at probably another million dollars for fire. And in the city, you know, on the pace that it's on, I don't see that it's going to quite get there in, in an eight-year term.
I have a question about
The council has to decide, I think the council has to decide, do they want to pursue full paid staff? Because, you know, as we can see, it, it's, you know, we've been told year over year over year that, you know, that, that's an idea to go towards. I would like to see it, but can we afford it, that's going to be the question.
Mike, go ahead.
My question is, how long are we required to maintain these personnel? If we get the safer grant, are, are we on, on the hook for another three years after, or what's the duration of that contract?
Tom, you want to answer that?
Sure. Josh, if, unless Josh was fixing to speak, I don't want to
No, go ahead, chief.
When they review these grants, what they want to see is that there is a, an intent to maintain the positions for as, as long as feasible. So obviously you can't tie any council down to anything past, you know, another council getting voted in. And at some point, you may find yourself in a position where the funding's not available to support personnel, and that could be just for any reason. And it could be, you know, any department that you're looking at. So essentially, the letter that, that Josh would submit would say that we are committed to, to maintaining these positions during the, the period of the grant. And that is the city's intent to try to maintain those positions as long as feasible. You know, obviously, you're not going to make the commitment to permanence, because you couldn't do that even if you wanted to. Not, anything can happen. But what they want to see is that there's a commitment to actually not just putting people on for, for three years and then letting them go. They want to, they want to get the biggest bang for their buck in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Chief, I got a question for you. Sort of piggybacking on what Jerry was asking, so if we've got these salaries in there at forty-two, five, that's close to what we have for the police department, and we're having a hard time getting to fill those positions. If we got this grant, are we going to be able to hire people at forty-two, five?
I definitely believe so. You know, there, depending on where you look and what part of the metroplex you're looking at, your salaries for, let's take firefighter, paramedic, because that's what I'm really most used to. Where I came from, we, when I left, we were starting about at fifty, fifty thousand five hundred, that was for a paramedic. Now, I could have hired firefighter, basic EMTs all day long for forty-two thousand, because there, there's, there's a lot of them out there. And they want to get a job, because they want to get started in the fire service. So I don't think there's going to be any problem at all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I've got a question. And that is, these firefighters that we would hire, I was under the impression we were looking for driver-certified personnel. Would these folks that we could hire for forty-two, five be classified as a certified driver?
If we hire them with the certification, yes. If not, then we would put them through a certification course, which we actually could teach in-house. It's a two-week course, it would get them a certification through the Texas Fire Commission, and then they'd be ready to go.
One of the big things we've had is we've got volunteers and nobody to get the truck to the, to the fire. So that would be one of my concerns, is that the people that we did hire could drive the trucks and have them to the fire.
Yes, that's correct, and that's specifically in the grant narrative, that we are going to use them for that purpose, and that's why we, we need them. So yes, they will be one way or the other certified drivers, whether they're hired in that way, or whether we put them through the course immediately after hiring.
Okay.
Chief. Chief.
Yes, yes.
I got a question. The driver certification, is it transferable from city to city?
Yes, it stays with the individual, once they've gone through the, the class, they, they get that certification and it's, it's with them.
I know when we had, when I worked with federal government, when we had people certified in soldering, when they went to another company, they had to recertify them. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that, make sure.
Now, as long as they maintain their continuing education hours for their fire certification, that they maintain, maintain.
Okay.
Where are we at on, go, go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, chief, got a question, because, because you're new with us, and we appreciate all you've done. You've got some vast experience and, and so forth there, you, you've looked at kind of where we've been. We've been at this for several years for this grant. What are you, what is your opinion on moving forward as to the likelihood we would even get the grant at all?
Well, I looked at the previous grant narratives, and there were some things written, excuse me, and Chief Baker did a good job. And let me back up first, let me say, I want to thank the council, I want to thank Josh and Mike and all the council for giving you the opportunity to serve the community. I appreciate that very much, and I, and I have been enjoying it so far. With that said, I looked at the narratives that Chief Baker wrote, and there were some, some verbiage in there that, that, in my opinion, could have worked against getting the grant. What you have to do is paint a picture of your, of your community and your needs. And, and along with that, you have to paint the picture of, of where the department is headed and where the community is headed. Excuse me, for example, and one, one of the, there's several narratives in the grant, I mean, there's probably ten separate sections you have to write narratives, but in one of those, I, I illustrated how the development that's going on in the city, for example, I understand there's a, a large residential development that's going to be starting to build soon, and that is, and what I've understand, predicted to build out within two years or so. And it's over six hundred lots. And, you know, that's going to increase our, our population considerably in a short period of time, in addition to some, some other developments that are going on. So what I did is I took that and used that to help build, to show how we have a need for these personnel based on the fact that our call volumes are going to increase also, with, along with that population increase. So there's, you have to build a, paint a picture for the, for the grant reviewers, because they know nothing about our community and our department. And, you know, there's a lot of other things I had to put in there as well, but that's just one example.
I have another question for you.
I don't know, I don't know if I answered the, the previous council member's question, what, what I think our, our chances are. I think they're good, but then again, there's, there's a lot of things that go into this, and, you know, what kind of a date is the grant reviewers having on that particular day when they look at your grant? You know, because they're human and they, and they have to grade these things based on what they feel.
Chief, I have one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
The three firefighters, all driver-certified drivers, will they be spread out on different shifts, so we guarantee a truck driver for each shift?
Yes, there'd be one sign per, per each shift, three shifts.
Okay.
Chief, where are we at as far as getting our volunteers drivers certified? I know we had talked about that in the past, because we always seem to have volunteers at the fire station, but none of them could drive the truck. Have we eliminated that issue? Do we have somebody that can drive the truck now, volunteers, or we still have an issue with that?
Well, we do have some drivers. We, unfortunately, the COVID issue has kept us from doing any, any training during the last couple of months. So we're getting ready to start that back up next, or actually tomorrow night. We'll have our first training class since, since this all started. So the answer to your question, the short answer is no, we have not added to the, to the driver list, but we are very soon going to be developing the class and getting people enrolled in that. There's a lot of things that go into it, we have to, first of all, make sure that the individuals that are going to be trained for drivers have completed all their candidate training, and we have some candidates that are going to start up soon. Per the ESD contract, they're required to have a certain number of hours. It's seventy-three hours in various topics before they can even fight fire for us, in, in county areas especially. So once they get that, then we have to, you know, put them through some classes on driving, but we also have to make sure that they have the experience to be able to handle the responsibility of driving those vehicles. We don't want to take somebody that's only been a firefighter or volunteer for, for let's say, six months, four months, five months, whatever, put them through a driver's class and then put them behind the wheel of a truck. They may or may not be able to have the, the maturity level or the, 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 the knowledge needed to pump the truck once they get to the fire, as, you know, as everybody knows, book experience and some practical is good, but there's no substitute for real-life experience. So it's a slow process, it's one that I'm getting on top of immediately, because it is a slow process.
Thank you.
Have you had a chance to review the qualifications of the volunteers that we currently have?
Are you talking about the individuals that are here now, or the requirements for the? I have met one-on-one with I, with everyone that I can get to the station, interviewed them individually, I've asked them about their concerns, past concerns, issues that they think need to be resolved. I've, I created a biography sheet that I've asked each one of them to fill out, that, that provided me with the information I need to determine their qualifications. Everything from certifications they may have, civilian experience, et cetera. And so I have, I have met with, I'd say probably about fifteen individuals, and that's pretty much our core group that responds to, to the majority of our incidents. And I've yet to meet a few more, there's probably about ten that I haven't met yet.
Not, not to put you on the spot or anything, chief, but of those fifteen you have met with, are any of them people that you would feel confident put behind the wheel of one of our trucks?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and, and there's a number of them that already are qualified to do that and are already doing it now.
Okay.
The problem, the, the problem we're having is the majority of our volunteers aren't residents of Joshua, they live, you know, twenty minutes or so away. What I'm working on too is developing a scheduling system, and there's one that I want to acquire in the next budget that would allow our volunteers and our personnel to schedule taking, spending time on shifts, and they would be able to do this from a distance, so they could get on their phone, their laptop, or their desktop computer, log into this scheduling system and schedule themselves at any time, they can see who is already scheduled. Because one of the things we want to do is get the experienced people together with the inexperienced people. Because if we have inexperienced people showing up at the station that are, that have only been with us for, you know, three, four months, five months, six months, they don't, they, they may have some training, they need to go get checked off to do certain things. We want to be able to partner them up with the people that we have now that have been here for a while, that are experienced and that are able to train them and get them in that position where they can respond. So I've got a multifaceted approach to trying to develop and get the volunteers to be more participative in the department. And I don't know if we have the time to outline that tonight, I wasn't prepared to do that, but it's a multifaceted approach to trying to get everybody together.
That's really getting a little bit off topic for, for tonight. The one other question that I would ask to bring it back to topic is, if we hire these three paid firefighters, would, do, do you believe that, that having them working with our volunteers would increase our volunteers' attitudes towards putting in and being here for us when we need them?
Yes, in fact, I just was speaking to someone at the department the other day about this. First of all, they're, they're going to know there's a driver there all the time. And volunteer firefighters, they, they want to participate in calls, they want to fight fires, they want to have that opportunity. And so when they know that there's an individual at the station twenty-four, seven, that can drive a vehicle, they're going to probably more likely sign up for shifts and be there so that they can leave that station on that truck. The other thing is, first of all, I believe that volunteer fire departments can be every bit as professional as a career fire department. However, I think having that paid professional there, highly trained, and, and there as an example, will help lift up not only the morale, but also have someone there that can set an example for them and guide them and help guide them along their development, whatever that may be.
Thank you.
Quick question, chief. If, if we work to get this grant, would that be a current fiscal year expenditure? Or would that be in the next fiscal year budget?
Well, they give you a period of time in order to do your recruiting. So my, my goal is to get people recruited and hired and on the job within ninety days of getting the grant. Now, the grant deadline, of course, is Friday, the fifteenth. I, I can imagine it's going to take at least a month, if not longer, for them to get to the point where we would be notified that we were, you know, really looking at being granted the, the grant. So I'm thinking that by the time all of that takes place, we will probably be into the next fiscal year, I could imagine. I don't know why we wouldn't be.
If I remember right, Josh.
I, I, I'm assuming you're talking about this, this coming budget that we're going about, we're about to work on, yes, we would definitely need the budget, budget for that, in that budget.
But it wouldn't necessarily be in this year's budget.
The current budget, sir? No, sir.
The current budget?
No, sir.
Okay.
Now, hey, Josh, in, in the past, we've not gotten notified of, of whether we got the grant or not till like September, October, correct?
Well, yeah, this last year especially, those who are here at the, at the budget, budget preparations last year, remember, we adopted the budget, just assuming, we had gotten so far, we assumed we were going to get it. I think about two weeks later, we found that, after we adopted the budget, started the fiscal year, we found out that we didn't get it after all. Previous, previous attempts at this, we had learned pretty quick, pretty early on that we hadn't received the, that we hadn't made it through the line. So last year was the first year that I can remember that we've applied, that we've applied for it, that we went so far into it and actually budgeted for it and then didn't get it. So it's just, it's been a little bit, we've gotten a little bit further every year.
Has anybody verified that this is still an active grant that they're paying out, you know, for multiple years? And the dates and times and everything for all the grant applications, it's still, are, you know, with all the COVID and a lot of the shutdowns, government adjustments and changes, I mean, you know, I just want to make sure that everything's still, you know, accurate information.
I can answer that, Josh.
Sure.
Yes, no, I wouldn't even be able to, to complete this application, it's on a government website. So the, the announcement was made last, well, thirty days ago, essentially this Friday. They give you thirty days to, to complete the grant application and submit it. So yes, it is completely active, and as far as I know, the government intends to stand behind it.
Do we have any applicants in mind already, or are we going to have to start the process once you get the grant approval?
No, I have not even considered looking at hiring anybody at this point, and it, and it wouldn't take too long, it wouldn't be too long of a process to advertise and get candidates.
Okay. You don't have any volunteers that, that are close enough to it that, that you've already got an eye on, or anything like that, is what I'm, what I'm getting at, you know?
Sure, and I intend to open it up to our volunteer staff, anyone that's qualified for the position. We have, we have a handful, you know, just a very small handful, but I, I'm not sure they're the individuals that want to actually be paid career firefighters. They have, they have private careers, and so
Okay.
One of the things, like I said, that we have to, to look at is, is, you know, monetarily, and again, that was the reason for the meeting denied, because this, again, we have to decide tonight whether we're going to turn it in Friday. We still have to take a vote on the homestead exemption, but for, for Josh's purposes, everything gets really tight. We've gotten the preliminary numbers in for this year. They're pretty good, but we don't know what any of the, oh, what's the word, Josh, the
Protest laws?
Yeah, what kind of loss we're going to have for that, for protest loss. You know, the exemptions is of course going to kick in, and then we're really under the gun on when the budget's got to be done. In other words, we, we've got to come up with a pretty good budget, probably by end of July, so that we can start voting and making all the dates that we need by August first, so that's
I would just interject, just on the timing issue that you're referencing, we still have yet to see the updated truth and taxation calculation forms from the comptroller. You know, they changed a lot of rules on it that went into effect this year. The, the timing of, of our budget adoption, I actually don't think is going to change very much, because of the, the minimum rate buffer that we're going to be under, and there are some slightly different rules, then your city's over thirty thousand have a lot shorter window or smaller window than we, we've had. I think we're going to be able to quote-unquote enjoy the traditional or historical window of adopting by September thirtieth. However, the truth However, the truth taxation calculation worksheets have not been sent out yet. And so when we have to adopt or we actually have to take the vote on the proposed tax rate and we usually do that in June of each year, that's still all up in the air. And so the, the point is making is we usually take about ninety to a hundred days to do our process and that could very well be about sixty days, even if we still have the same adoption deadline as we typically have, is we just don't know what that's going to be yet. When you guys start talking about, you know, deadlines, we were talking about one deadline for this Friday for this grant application. The other deadline for the homestead exemption is that has to be adopted by July first. We haven't even gotten our certified totals yet and then we still have to do the proposed tax rate with the new timeline, which we don't know what it is yet. So there's so many things that are, that are up in the air right now. Like I say, that our, our preliminary numbers, like Mayor, you just referenced, came in and it was a significant increase. We saw about right now, based on the preliminaries, it's about twelve percent appraised value increase. Of course, there's almost no protest loss included in the calculations right now. When the June numbers came out last year, we saw that number go from one point seven in appraised value protest loss to almost fifteen million in thirty days. And then we've got our certified totals and it dropped down to about four million. So it is, it's so all over the place. It really depends on what happens between May first and June first, which is the deadline to, to protest one's appraised value. So the, the next one we get is going to give us a really good idea of what protest loss we might be looking at.
Look into your crystal ball and tell us what that's going to be so we can vote tonight.
I wish I could. We probably would be having this conversation.
Remember, we're only talking, we're only talking about thirty-seven-five for the first year. But I, I am curious, has, what about the E S D? Do we have anybody at the E S D that has stated that, hey, if a city is able to go get one of these and they'll help, you know, give thirty percent or anything?
No, we have not, we have not engaged the E S D in terms of whether they would be willing to partner with, with us. If, if, if experience, and Jerry, you know this well, and certainly my experience, been with Joshua at this point, our experience has been is that is likely not going to bear any fruit. We, on the other hand, we haven't asked, you know, so it doesn't hurt to ask. So we haven't, but no, we have not engaged them on whether they would be willing to meet us or, you know, have their own kind of match situation if we were to do it. I know when, when we started this conversation last year in terms of the strategic plan, Chief Baker had convened a strategic, you know, planning task force. I think Jerry, you and Scott were a part of that and some, some, some other people we were going to reconvene at the beginning of this year. And we have yet to do that with some of the, with Wayne leaving and Joey Bennerom and now Tom coming on board and that's, and of course, we should, we should be, if we haven't, we received it, we'll be looking at the, the contract for the E S D for next year at the next meeting. So, but no, we have not, we have not engaged them on that question.
Josh, out of curiosity, does the current contract say that if we make more calls, we would get more money? I wasn't here in September, so I don't know. Typically in years past.
It's the same contract. So there's, there's the base. It wasn't the same in terms, we, our base contract fee went up. We did, we did get an increase there, but nothing changed from the previous year. The only incentive in terms of extra, extra funds we have is the percentage of calls we make, you know, which, you know, kind of gradually go down. The incentive you get every month goes down based on the percentage of calls, I think down to eighty percent. So that's the only thing, that's the only thing that we would actually be able to earn any additional funds.
So Chief, do you think we would be able to earn, I assume you've looked at the contract. Do you think if we did have the three paid firefighters that we would be able to increase our call volume to where we would be getting more money then from the E S D based on the calls that we're making? Chief, I don't know. Did you hear?
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you talking? No, I thought you were asking Josh. I'm sorry.
No, I was asking you.
Okay. Well, you know, the calculations I've done looking at the call statistics and how many people we have on a truck when they leave here, average is about two and a half people on fires. I'm thinking, obviously, if you, if you put a paid person on a shift, that goes up immediately to three and a half people average. But I'm thinking it will increase that to four based upon the other things we're trying to do to get the incentives for people to be at the station. So I think we're definitely going to make more calls. For example, this, this last month, you may not have seen the report yet, but in April, we only had four missed calls or four percent of the calls we made. That's down from fourteen calls or twelve percent of the previous month. I'm hoping that that's going to continue to drop eventually to nothing. Now, I can't predict the future, but with the efforts I'm putting forth, I think we're, we're definitely going to make headway.
Josh, do you know what kind of dollar value we would get if we did increase the calls, just off the top of your head?
I, I would have to look at the incentive list, but it was pretty, quite, quite frankly, it was kind of, it was pretty.
Hey, Josh.
Not financially material. It wasn't a whole lot. I mean, it was more, but.
I mean, Keen and Alvarado got to be making enough off of it that it's still worthwhile for them.
No, the incentive, Joe, if I'm not mistaken, is about ten thousand dollars a year. And so if you're, you're able to get about ten thousand dollars, about eight hundred dollars a month. It's very minuscule to the grand scheme of things.
Okay.
Yeah. And I would say when it comes to Alvarado and Keen, that, that is not a, we're probably more comparable to Godly in terms of having, you know, a city, a municipal fire, fire department that's, you know, volunteer based. Obviously, Keen and Alvarado have made a decision that they're going to have full-time staff. And so they, you know, they're, number one, they're going to reach those goals a lot easier because of the paid staff. And they frankly, their, their, their policy model is that they're going to have a fire department, period, and then they use the E S D to offset the cost of that fire department. So not, they're not exactly a, probably a good comparison for us.
Fair enough.
Let's run into Godly has two stations, so they kind of get double as well, just for that idea that they have two buildings.
Josh, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And it, it kind of has to do with this on the financial side of it. I looked at my last year's tax deal on the exemptions and every one of them was for either five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen or whatever in five thousand dollar increments. And now we're talking a five percent. Is this a change in policy or are we talking a five thousand dollar homestead exemption?
Yeah. So, so when it comes to the homestead exemption, the state law requires that you, you, you have to adopt a percentage, okay? So you do not adopt a, a specific monetary amount. It's just whatever percentage you adopt, whether that's one percent or ten percent, has to result in a minimum of five thousand dollar exemption. So if, for instance, we were looking at five percent and somebody owned a, a homestead that, that, you know, with that five percent exemption would not, you know, wouldn't reach, by math, wouldn't reach five thousand, they would still get five thousand. See what I'm saying? So we, we adopt the percentage based on how the state law requires us to adopt the homestead exemption. That just has to result in a five thousand dollar, minimum five thousand dollar homestead exemption or value exemption.
Is this a new requirement or?
No, if you actually, if you look at the, if you look, I think you see the, the, the tax assessor website that has all the tax, tax rates and exemptions listed. Cleveland is the only municipality in the county that has one and it's ten percent.
And I think.
And I think it says, or five thousand, so.
Yeah, I think the schools actually get to give a flat amount. They're not percentages. It's just the ISDs, and I'm looking at it now, not sure what the county is, but they, the ISDs, their exemptions are all dollar amounts. It's not a percentage, it's a dollar amount.
Well, just to get back on topic with, with this safer grant, from what I've gathered from, from the comments, from, from everybody and from, from the chief, thank you, chief, for your work that you've done so far. I think it would be beneficial for us to go forward with pursuing the safer grant and absorbing the thirty-seven-five a year for the first couple of years and, and in consideration that we should be growing for a number of reasons. The first reason would be if we're fully staffed, all three shifts were more likely, as the chief attested to, that we would have volunteers want to show up. So therefore, we would be fully staffed. We would have more volunteers that would, that would sign up and, and agree to come. And I think just personally, the way the growth has been and the way that we've projected our growth in our, in our studies that we've done, I think we would be safe in assuming that we, we would still grow, COVID or not. So it, my vote would be to go ahead and pursue this safer grant and go forward.
Angela, you've been awful quiet. What are you thinking?
I, I actually agree with Mike and I expressed that earlier this week, or was it last week I told Josh. We probably will be growing pretty steadily and when I look, like, you know, the chief said, as opposed to fourteen missed calls, we had only four. And I, I feel like this is going to be very important for us in the near future to have a couple of paid personnel at the fire department. And that will also encourage the volunteers. That, that was my opinion, actually, and I agree with Mike on that, yes. And thank you, chief. I, thank you. I got here late and I'm sorry. I was having a lot of technical issues today.
None of the rest of us were having any technical difficulties.
I never usually have technical difficulties, but.
Yeah, we were all, here at City Hall, we were all having them, so I'm just giving you our time.
Like I said, I've sort of gone back and forth on this several times. I was under the impression that it was the full hundred and fifty thousand. I think I feel a lot better knowing that, as far as the net budget goes, we're only talking about thirty-seven thousand five hundred for the first couple of years. I think with the homestead exemption and the thirty-seven thousand, I think we're, we would definitely be in good shape. And I, you know, like Mike and Angela, I think with the growth that I think we'll have over the next several years, I think, you know, we could be able to move into that. If we aren't, then we're not basically locked into it. As I said, there'll be a new council. If they decide it's not worth it, then they would have that option. But I, like I said, I think with it just being the thirty-seven thousand, the fact that we'll be able to make more calls and, I mean, even if we just got five thousand dollars more from the E S D, that's five thousand we weren't going to get. And so that, that makes the number even a little bit smaller. So I think that's where I'm sitting right now.
Tom, have you had any communication with the E S D?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Have you had any communication with the E S D?
Oh, yes. Met with Tom Foster, director, as one of the first persons I met with when I took the job. I've known Tom for a long time. He worked at Burleson and I've had interactions with him there during, doing regional training where I was before. And I got a good briefing from him. I have a real good relationship with him and, you know, I know we won't have any problem working together and communicating and getting, you know, our points crossed.
You know, I, I, my biggest concern, all right, we're talking about, if we do a five thousand dollar homestead exemption, Josh, you said that's going to cost us close to a hundred thousand dollars in revenue from sale, from property tax?
Yeah. So again, I want to make sure we're talking percentages, right? So, but it's five percent. But yeah, based off of the, actually, I actually ran the numbers today. That hundred thousand dollars is based on the previous year's tax rolls. The one we got earlier this month has us, quote unquote, having getting about a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars less than what we otherwise would have. Now, you take into account that, yes, that'd be a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars less than we otherwise would. We kind of, I hate saying it this way, but in terms of not getting, rather than giving it, you know, giving, giving it away, because we have to, we had to receive it first, but not receiving a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We also had, you know, as it stands right now, about twelve percent growth. So we would still net, you know, I guess about seven percent additional if everything stays the same. Again, there are any protest loss numbers in there right now and those can be substantial. But yeah, so we would quote unquote lose about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars with the homestead exemption.
Okay. And we also have a, a bond project that we're getting ready to, to start getting into during the next fiscal year, which that will impact our, what, what we have to pay back on that, correct?
Yeah. So if you'll remember, we, the, the way, we, of course, we had the, we had the vote last fall and we have waited to issue those bonds because we're actually retiring one of our bonds in September. So the numbers actually look really good right now because if you plug in the debt, the debt service for next year, our debt service is dropping about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now granted, we have this, you know, this approved bond that we'll initiate, that we'll need to issue, you know, it'll, it'll basically replace that. So the net change is going to be, you know, basically zero. But we don't know what the debt service on that, on the issuance of that bond's going to be yet. Well, the whole idea of putting it on the back end of this fiscal year was number one, to save the, save the, kind of the interest until we needed it, with the project is ready to go. And then once we knew what our tax rates were going to be, our no new revenue, our no new revenue rates, I used to say that, in the boner pool rates, then that would actually help us knowing what our, our debt service rate would need to be in order to issue those bonds. So it should be a net zero in terms of the financial impact, maybe not exactly zero. Yes, we'll maybe issue those bonds or we're retiring one as well. And that's, we timed it that way on purpose.
Well, my, my biggest concern is with all this madness that's been going on since the first of March and so on and so forth. So many people in our city are hurting financially that we, we got to be careful putting ourselves in a position where we may have to look at a tax increase to cover these things. Now, based on the information we've gotten, it doesn't look like that's a immediate boom. We're going to have to do it this year to, to cover it. Okay? But we're also hearing that this thing may come back in the fall and be worse than it was during the spring.
And it's to the context first and.
You know, we, we've, we've got to, we've got to think a little bit ahead. We got to, got to look a little bit further down the road. If we have another stint where people are made to stay in their homes and can't go work, nobody's going to be able to afford anything. So, you know, putting it off for a year doesn't necessarily stop us from getting it a year from now. You know, where we might have a better idea how all this stuff's going to play out, how the bottom line is going to affect the cities. And that's, that's my thought is, is what, what's wrong with saying, hey, this year, we're not going to submit one, let's wait till next year. And just based on, just based on what's happening right now and from the projections we are getting from those we're supposed to be trusting, the fall looks worse than the spring did.
Well, Scott, I just, just from a, from a policy standpoint, and obviously I'm not a decision maker here, but I, I think that, I think that argument would probably apply to anything we were looking at doing new, including the homestead exemption. Obviously, the homestead exemption would quote unquote cost us, you know, three or four times more than what the grant cost us in the first year. So I think that would be a, that's, that's an interesting question in terms of if there's so many things kind of up in the air, do we, do we change anything right now? Whether that's add, you know, add to the budget or take away from, from the budget in terms of, in terms of what, what the appraised values would mean for our revenues. But I think it, if, if we are, you know, that, that probably will be, that line of thinking will probably apply to just about every part of the budget as we go into the summer. You know, we probably would need to look at making some significant cuts in, just in case it did have a resurgence in the fall and we would be, we were forced to cut anyway.
But basically what you've told me is right now, everything, as far as our sales tax, all those things are not dropping as much as, as we really anticipated that they might through all this. We're actually not as in that a shape as we could be.
Oh, that's true.
But so right now, that's not, you know, right now is not the issue. It's if it does come back. And I mean, depending on which experts you listen to, they're saying it's anywhere from, from a sixty to ninety probability it's coming back. Every one of them saying the same thing, though. When it comes back, it'll be worse than what it is now.
Yeah, I don't I wasn't referencing anything about the what is currently happening. I think we were talking about, you know, the the next fiscal year and then the which is the fall. And to not to not lock ourselves into the grant, which would not affect us until the next fiscal year. So that's what I was.
It'd be fiscal twenty one, twenty two that this would start impacting, not fiscal twenty twenty one?
No. Okay, so I want to make sure we're talking. When I say current, I mean like today.
Right, not fiscal year nineteen, twenty?
Well, I wasn't talking about the current fiscal year. I think we're all talking about the twenty twenty one, which starts October first, which is the timeframe you're talking about with the virus may, you know, rebound.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's something that I think we need to consider.
Right. Well, Scott, to your point, though, I think if indeed what you're describing does happen, I think, you know, we would have ever right to do what other cities are doing right now. We may have to furlough those people, and I think that would be perfectly within our rights and wouldn't be against what the grant was saying. I mean, we're going into this thinking everything's going to be normal, whatever normal is. But if some drastic did change, then I think, you know, we're perfectly within our rights to say, hey, we're going to have to drop one or two of these guys. Hopefully, it wouldn't come to that, but I think we would always have that option. Am I correct, Chief? If something drastic happened, and we couldn't pay the guys, and there's not money in the budget, we've got the right to cancel it at a future date, correct?
Well, I can't answer. I I would have to look at the grant requirements and see if there are any options in there for, you know, hardships and so forth. There may be. I couldn't tell you right now. Obviously, if you don't have money, you don't have money. You can't pay. You know, there's nothing you can do about that. And, you know, how that would affect us in future grants, if we had to say, you know, hey, we have to just stop in the middle of this. I don't know. I would have to get some guidance from from the federal people on that.
But I think our intent would be, yes, we think we can fund it. But again, if something drastic came up, then just like everybody else, we're going to have to take some drastic measures possibly.
But honestly speaking, if we had to defund anything, we would we would not defund our our first responders. We would defund something else first. So I still think the need is there and and first and foremost, getting the firefighters in a position to to make all their calls and to have what they need and and for us to be on good feet with that will help people move to the city. It will encourage people to build homes, and it will it will, in the long run, will encourage development to to know that we have the coverage to cover these areas that are developing. So I'm still all for it.
I I want to inject something here. Let's picture yourself as a volunteer firefighter. And you come in and you train and you train and you train. You hope there's never a fire, but there is one. And you're really wanting to get out of there and get after this, but you have nobody to drive the truck, so you're let down. Eventually, you lose interest and you leave. And I think what they're saying, we have some paid firefighters that can drive the truck, then these guys are going to stay.
Is we have been being promised for the last six years that they were going to have within the next fifty, ninety days. Every time we we brought it up, and it's still happening. So, you know, I I trust I trust Chief.
Yeah, everybody stop talking right now. Stop talking. And who where's the cross talk coming from?
I think it's Jerry.
Oh, that fixed it. Okay, go ahead, Scott. I think you were talking or Rick.
Well, yeah, I I trust I trust Chief to hire people that he can get qualified to to drive the trucks and so on and so forth because I don't have a track record. All I can base my track record on is what's gone on the last six years. And and, you know, I I we do. We need to have people drive the trucks. We need to get to the fires, and we need to have the qualified people fighting them. I I I'm not against the fire department. My biggest thought is we have citizens that are saying, hey, look, we can't do no more. Everybody got the ten percent plus evaluation increase. Everybody's got increased taxes coming out of their 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 paychecks and stuff if they're getting them. And right now, you know, committing to to this type of thing in the long run, you're you're saying down the road, guys, your taxes are going to have to go up if we have a play paid department. And that's that's the bottom line. So I'm not opposed to 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 the grant. I'm not opposed to trying to get it. You know, it's just like we argued last year when we thought we might get it, we might not get it when we were doing the budget discussions. You know, that's a chunk of money that the city just might not have if things happen the way they are saying they're pretty much sure is going to happen. And I'm I'm just I'm just voicing that concern.
Anybody else want to say anything?
I I just think that if something like Scott was talking about, if it happened, I actually believe that we could write a justification letter to the government explaining all this, and maybe we could get relieved from that because we have no money coming in. The sales tax goes down, everything else. And I think I think we could do something like that.
Yes, Robert, you got any comments?
Well, yeah, I've got a question for Chief, but that's in in just a minute. The deal with the exemption. I mean, let's face it, we've got a what a four hundred thousand dollar fire department budget. About adding thirty seven thousand five hundred to it for two years. I think that is something reasonable to get us a fire department that is going to be fully functional. And I agree with Chief that when you've got leadership, you're going to get followers, and that is one of the keys to getting getting recruits and getting volunteers. I've been both ways on this. I would like to know if having three full time firefighters would change our key rate on insurance. And if so, by how much? And that might be a personal offset to whatever this would cost over the whole community on homeowner's insurance. And I think it's kind of we're kind of in a situation where if we're cutting taxes one way and worried about raising taxes another way, is this the time to to do that? And that that's my two cents. And I've been both sides of this story, but hearing the chief talk about the number of missed calls, how that has gone down. I've seen it as high as, you know, twenty, twenty five percent missed calls. If we can get that down to zero, now we now we're spending four hundred thousand dollars for something that we that we paying for. We're getting a service for what we're paying for.
Can I can I address that, Josh?
Yes, sir.
There's kind of two issues here. One is missed calls, which obviously the primary reason is we don't have people to drive vehicles. The second issue is having adequate staffing. Now, one of the things the grant, the main thing this grant is looking at is is how you are going to qualify is not the word I'm looking for, but comply with a couple of NFPA requirements. They're called seventeen ten seventeen twenty. Seventeen ten applies to career departments. And seventeen twenty applies to volunteer primarily volunteer combination departments. It has to do with how fast you can get to a call and how many people you can get to the call initially, and how many people you can get on the fire scene within a certain period of time. So we're trying to do both. We're trying to get people to the fire, but we're also trying to get adequate staffing at the fire to be able to to do the job. Now, I can give you an example. We had a fire this early, late last night, early this morning, about eleven thirty it came in, and we were there until about two in Mountain Valley. And we had our engine respond with just two people on it. And I obviously, I I showed up also and then took command of the fire. So ultimately, that made three, and then Fire Marshal or Assistant Chief Crackey showed up also later on. Now, we had three other volunteer departments there helping us. And unfortunately, the E S D didn't show up, and I hate to say that because I know how everybody feels about the E S D. But they didn't show up because after seven o'clock, they're just in the same position we are. They're volunteers, and they just couldn't get anybody to respond. So when you're fighting a house fire, and I know some of you probably already know this, you have to have a certain number of people to initially make a tax safely. And then you have to have people there to relieve people who've been in the fire for a certain period of time because they're going to be exhausted and out of air. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to get the department to the point where we have people at the station showing up and wanting to go. Now, again, I said, that's a multifaceted approach to trying to accomplish that. But one of the main ways is getting people at the station there all the time so that they can drive people to the calls. And and I would say one of the thing, I know you can put this off, and and obviously, you hired me to do one thing, and that is, you know, determine the best course for mitigating emergency incidents and and taking care of it in the proper manner. I would say this, just like anything else that's an issue, the more you the longer you put it off, generally, the bigger of an issue it becomes down the road. And so I I can't account for the funding because that's not my job. But I can tell you that if we if we continue to put this issue off, it will just compound itself, especially if our population continues to increase.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I got a I got a comment, and you correct me if I'm wrong. If we get this grant, one of the most marketable assets you're looking is if the driver's certified and trained, right?
Yes, sir.
So he can bring it out. So we get some volunteers in, we send them, we pay for the training, get them certified and everything. Now, they got a marketable value to another fire department that'd be looking like us to get somebody trained to drive a truck. So they don't have to pay for that, right? To get a paid firefighter for them.
That's true to a certain extent.
Then we have to turn around and train another individual to take his place. So I'm.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm I'm saying, wouldn't that be fact? You're looking for somebody trained so you can hire them. They're they're ready to hit the ground running. And if we train a volunteer, and he gets a certification, Godley or Keane or somebody else sees this, and they say, well, let's offer him a job. He's got a certification, so we don't have to train him. And then they offer him a position with paid.
Well.
So we got to look at that, too.
Right. And let me answer that from my previous experience. Firefighter E M T basics is what we're looking at hiring. Now, they are not the most marketable employees because the majority of career fire departments in the Dallas-Fort Worth area are looking for paramedics because most of them run their own ambulance systems. Of course, big departments like Fort Worth, Arlington, Dallas, they don't necessarily have to have paramedics, although Dallas runs its own ambulance, so they are in high demand in Dallas. But for the majority of departments where people are going to be looking to get employed, and that's primarily the smaller departments, they're looking for paramedics. So I I lost paramedics all the time when I was in Pan Tigo, and we lost a lot of them to Arlington. I don't think that our firefighter basic E M Ts would be quite as marketable that they would be in such high demand. And obviously, we could lose lose them. I mean, I'm not going to say we're not going to. I think that you might imagine.
Yeah, now I would just add, Rick, to that point, is this is obviously something that we deal with within the police department quite a bit as well. It's something I've dealt with as administrator my entire career. You're in a large community, you're just trying to get some people in, you get them in, you get them trained, and they take the license slash certification and whatnot with them to to be a brighter pastures, and it's just a part of that. It's just a part of the job. It's something that, you know, probably I would think even some of our the mid the mid-sized cities deal with when it comes to having to compete with larger cities, and it's just a part of part of governing and, you know, just it's part of the personnel puzzle, if you will, is how do you how you bring in people, you invest in them. And I think this is an issue that, you know, we've sent a couple of people to Police Academy as a as a, you know, as a tool to get some some bodies in there, to get some the staffing we need. And it's always going to be a tricky proposition when you bring people in who have no experience, no certification. You get them trained up, you get them a couple of years' experience, and then they they leave. So that's going to be an ongoing challenge for us.
And also, through the E S D, we can get training free. I mean, we can have people trained as drivers through the E S D. It wouldn't cost us anything. And we could also do that in-house, and it wouldn't cost us anything.
All right. Anybody else got anything they want to say?
Yeah, Joe, I'd like to kind of close up with some.
Sure.
That looking at, you know, the the broad, you know, scope of things, you know, I've been there the longest. I know the E S D challenges we've had. I've been, you know, hey, I've been a a fan of the fire department. I've also been an adversary at times. I mean, it's one of those things. It's it's a lesser all equals that. We love our fire department. We love the setup that it has. But I think it's sometime we're getting to the point in the populace in the city that we've got to, we're going to have to go to that road of of paid staff. It's just the volunteer scale, the volunteer size is just not going to be able to maintain it as we approach that eight, ten, twelve thousand populace in the next, you know, ten years. I think it'd be detrimental if we, you know, if we don't go ahead and apply for the grant now, if we take a year off. I think, you know, when you when you're talking grants, you know, as as these, as those that review the grants, the year in, year out, they see these names come across the the board each year, you know, as one disappears. You know, bringing it back to the forefront is harder to get. So so I, you know, I think it's important that we continue to to move forward with it. In the big picture, thirty seven five for the next two years, the city's got to be able to figure out how to get that. I think it's very achievable. We're going to have some protests this year. We know it's going to happen. We're going to have some loss of some sales tax revenue, but I think in the property tax side, I think with the growth of the the city and all, I think we're going to still be able to sustain, even with the cut that we're talking about, you know, overall. So so I think we move forward with this, and then I think it's going to be important that, you know, the next council and and everybody, you know, looked into how, you know, how beneficial has it been? Has it been able to make the adjustments? And I think, Tom, I I think we're going to have to test Tom that he's got the good, you know, good communication with the E S D. And it's got to be out there. The expectation is they have to start participating more on the city side, you know, on the funding. It's just not been there year in, year out. Their idea of creating their own departments and sending a lot of funding that way, more so than us, is just not not very beneficial, especially as Tom said himself. All go from seven o'clock, they shut down. What's the benefit of that, right? So at the end, I think we move forward with this. We 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 thank Tom for all that he's done. And and hey, welcome to Joshua, Tom, right?
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it. It's good to be here.
One of those things that that we do count on him to help, even if we can get the E S D to 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 agree that, hey, for the next two years, sixteen thousand a year, pay for half of it. That's a huge win, and it's not a lot to ask for the E S D if we really push it right.
Well, I would certainly approach Mr. Foster with that and and see if anyone's ever tried that before. As as someone said, doesn't hurt to ask, and I'll do my best.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
I would like to make a motion that we accept this and go forward with the safer grant and authorize the city manager to carry out the task.
I second.
Okay, got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Jerry Moore to approve going forward with the safer grant and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents, plus any comments or letters that he needs to do. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. I'll try and count. Looks like you got one, two, three. three, four, five, six, seven, approved. Motion carries seven, zero. Chief, we appreciate it. I think you were probably one of the determining factors in this. I'm not sure if, you haven't been doing what you've been doing, we would have approved this tonight. So we appreciate your hard work and take this information back to the fire department, tell them saying, hey, you know, we're, we're going to try and help them out and get them what they need and make this one of the best fire departments around.
See some movement on, on getting some of the volunteers qualified to, to be there and, and committed to be there to drive those trucks on a regular basis, too.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Chief. Scott, I wanted to, I wanted to address that. I think the, and Chief Griffith, you please, correct me on this. We do have current volunteers who are certified to drive. The issue is, is Chief kind of mentioned earlier, nobody, very few of them, if any of them are residents. So it's having them here when there's a fire, right? So when you're paying them, you know they're going to be here. So we do have some people that are certified to drive right now, but we just have no way of guaranteeing they're going to be here when a fire, if and when a fire pops up. So I, I think that would be, and I think that was kind of the question I think somebody else had earlier, is do we have anybody currently certified that could, you know, if we were to get the grant, would automatically, you know, kind of slide into those paid positions? And of course, Chief, you know, was obviously going to leave that open to who the most qualified people are. But just sort of some clarification, we do have people, volunteers that are already certified. They're just not guaranteed to be here via pay.
That's correct. And most of our participation is, is when we staff people at the station is primarily during the day, daytime. We don't have much of that going on at night.
All right. Well, I'm banging my gavel. We're done. Adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.